And we really need as a community, because I lived here all my life, is to promote that outside of the school. We all know what a great school this is, but out there, we gotta make sure that we let everybody else know. And I let them know what a great experience I've had. So, thank you for the invite. Our first meeting with the coaches with this COVID, I told our coaches, we had to be caring, lovable, flexible, understanding, even more than ever. And we had to understand this, because kids had to work, stay home with their siblings to watch them. They had football, baseball, baseball, wrestling. They had other obligations that we had to make sure that we were so understanding to their needs. And not make them feel like we have to be at baseball. I told them to be present where you're at. If you had a family gathering, that's great, just make sure that you're present there. If you're at baseball, great, make sure you're present there. Football and wrestling the same way. And our coach, wrestling coaches, and football coach, we worked together and we made it work. So that was the first step of all of that. So I told our coaches, you know, we really have to do that, not just talk to talk, but we gotta do it. Then I told our players, I said, you gotta be a good son, a good brother, gotta be good in the community, you gotta be a good student, a good teammate, and then you'll be a good baseball player. You have to be all those other things, because you have to trust one another. And then you'll know you'll work hard in baseball, and you'll know you'll do the right thing in baseball. And you know what, they accomplished that. We had two, we had a leader, and Rego was our shortstop. We were missing one, he came in, and he was a vocal leader. And I said to the other players, I said, it's okay to follow if you're following a good leader. And he brought guys along. And we had two senior leaders, Danny Cesario, who played all three sports during this time, who never missed. And then we had Aiden, our all-state pitcher. When I asked him, at the end of the year, what is your record? He said, I don't know, coach. I said, what's your ERA? He says, I don't know, coach. And I looked at Coach Cam Cobb, and I said, he's the pitching coach. And I said, what is it? He says, I have to look, and I'll let you know. That was the team, that's what you call a team. Everybody's just looking from game by game to win that game. And so you can lead in different ways, and you can follow in different ways. And I always believed that not everybody's cut out to be a vocal leader, some are silent leaders. And then the younger guys just gotta follow, and just follow along, and things will be just right. Then I saw on the baseball field house, I looked up, 1953, I think it was, conference champs. And I told our players, we will win a regional championship this year. And I'm gonna step down after that. And you know what, sometimes you gotta be careful what you wish for, but we won that regional championship, and it was outstanding. Our first game was against Maine East, and they wanted to play us. They emailed me like six times, they wanted, everybody wants to play us. And we beat them six to nothing. The coach came to us and said, what a great game, you guys have a great team. And I kinda knew we were, you know, not bad, we played a very good game. And our next key game was Glenbard South. We were winning five to nothing, losing sixteen to five, tied it up sixteen sixteen, losing nineteen sixteen, tied it up nineteen nineteen, won twenty-one to nineteen. After the game, I told them, that was the worst baseball game I've ever seen in my life. But your character was the best, your love for the game was the best. Your being teammates, never getting down was the best. And when it comes full circle, we played Bartlett, who turns out to be the conference champs, one of the best, the best team in our conference. The next, next day, two days later, we lose to them five to two. And after the game, I said, I really don't believe in moral victories, but that was the best baseball game I've seen in a long time. You guys are very, very good. We didn't make a mistake, we just got beat by a better team, and that's baseball. We play our worst game, and we win, and we play our best game, and we won. So now we're starting to get a little recognition in the conference, and people are starting to get a little nervous about us. And we have senior night, which he's wearing his senior night jersey. Thanks to Mr. Regal for helping me out with all that. I really, really appreciate all your help with senior night. We made it look like I knew what I was doing, and nicely she guided me right along. But it was senior night, and we went two to nothing against Glenbard East on senior night, which nobody in the world thought we were gonna win. So then, we go on an eight-game winning streak. We go on an eight-game winning streak going into the regionals. And now we're gonna get seeded, this is the best part. So we don't know when we're gonna get seeded. I'm thinking, hey, Cam did it all, we're right on target. Seedings come out, we're seeded number three. St. Francis of Wheaton's one, Montini's two, Fenton's three. Who's behind us? Ridgewood, Lakeview, who we play. Best of all, St. Pat's is behind us, Fenwick's behind us, and we're sitting pretty. And now I'm really starting to think we're gonna win. I mean, I say, we got a shot. So I know we're gonna get to the regional championship. I know it, I know it. So it's Friday night, we win our game, I go watch. I'm sitting at home, my wife says, we gotta go watch them play. She says, you're gonna be up all night either way. So we're driving to their, to Taft, where they're playing right around Taft. We're driving there to scout them. And I said to my wife, I said, wouldn't it be something if we see five or six of our players watching this game? And believe it or not, I walk in the stadium, I had chills, chills. There they are, sitting in the stadium, watching, coming in, watching this game, seeing who we're playing. And to a man, when they left, they said, they walked right by me, and they said, "Coach, we play just as good a team as they are, we'll be all right." And these guys, they look like they're twenty-five, they're tall, they're big, they're athletic. And I'm like, oh boy. I said, I'm getting a little nervous now. So wherever they're driving home, and I hate to pick you out again, we drive it home, we pass up Regal's funeral home. And my wife says, well, if you don't win, I know where we're gonna have your services at. So here's the fun part. Here's the fun part. Saturday, we practice. Nick, Michael, they put their arms around me and say, "Coach, we got this." "Coach, we got this." And that was the time he told me he didn't know his record, and he didn't know his ERA. And he says, "Coach, we got this." Monday comes, championship game, and I'll be done in one minute here. Championship game, unbelievable. Two to nothing going into the sixth. They hit three shots, third baseman makes a great play, our shortstop makes a great play, our center fielder makes a great play. And Victor is on the soccer field, he said, I heard all these shots, all the balls being hit. He said, I can't believe you guys caught them all. We did make a decision to take Aiden out, he threw ninety-seven pitches. So I go with our closer, Nick. First guy, he hits, we're winning two to nothing. The second guy, he walks. The third guy gets a base hit. We got the bases loaded, it's two to nothing, we're winning, and nobody out. He strikes out the, I go out to the mound, and I go, Nick, where is this swag? Your hat, your collar is not open, your hat's not to the side. You're not, you're not dancing on the mound, you don't have that rap music in you. I said, come on, you gotta get this done. I said, you can do it, just relax, you're in. First guy, he strikes out, second guy, he strikes out, third guy is zero and two, he bends off a curveball. And before that ball got into the guy's bed, I called strike three game. And we were out in the field before that umpire could even call strike three. And it was so fun to see everybody in the stands. I seen my mom was ninety, my brother, my sisters were there, Cam's mom and dad was there. I have, we have ex-teammates from Fenton were there, my friends were there, people from all over, aunts and uncles, grandma and grandpas were there. And it was just the most amazing feeling in the world. Just one of the most amazing things in the world. And we went two to nothing, and we bring home a regional championship ever. And it was such a thrill. Something that I go to bed every night, smile on my face, and I just thank the Lord for all having the opportunity to coach these young men. And my last point before I just let you guys go, or let us go here, is that Cam Cobb, right-hand man, best assistant coach around, helped me with all this logistical stuff, was anything I asked him, he did. And I've coached on a lot of championship teams, baseball, basketball, and football. My kids have played on championship, state championship teams. Ron Janik, by far, is arguably one of the best coaches, Hall of Fame coaches I've ever been around. Without these two guys, it doesn't get done. So, and with that, I just wanna thank everybody, and congratulations to all of us as a community, congratulations to all you guys, and you know what, thanks so much what Fenton has done for me. Thank you.
Wow, I don't know about you, I'm ready to play some baseball after that. My goodness, no wonder we won a regional. Anyway, Aiden, we wanna congratulate you on your three A all-state team. Any words you wanna speak, say tonight, or?
Yeah. Firstly, I would like to thank all the coaches, Coach Schwabbi, Coach Janik, I don't think he's here, Coach Cobb. It's been a great year. I wouldn't really call it a team, I would more call it, I guess, family, because the, everyone on the team, we all were, we're all together. When it goes on from the bus, we had Nick playing all the rap music, everyone was just all together. And even when it comes to practice, we were there, everyone was there, no one would even mess up. We were like, I'm sorry, it's my first time. It was just really great, everyone was together, no one was hating on each other, everyone just, we were like brothers. From all of my coaches, I'd like to say thank you. Coach Pete, he helped me a lot, and then Coach Today, who was also a teacher, that helped me a lot too. And then when it comes to my family, my mom, my dad, and of course, my brothers, thank you.
Before we take a picture, as Coach Schwabbi indicated, he's stepping away after ten years of service, I think it's appropriate to give him a round of applause too. Before we take a picture, as Coach Schwabbi indicated, he's stepping away after ten years of service, I think it's appropriate to give him a round of applause too. Okay, we're gonna take a picture right over here up front with, with Aiden and the coaching staff. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next recognition, which is our football team, Eric Moreno, Nicholas Ben, and Frank Krieger. If you could come up here with Coach Lynch. So we have Eric Moreno here, academic all-state, Nicholas Ben, academic all-state, Frank Krieger, academic all-state, honorable mention for all-state football. Just a few notes here, in order to qualify, players must be on the varsity, be selected the first team all-conference, and must maintain a cuma GPA of three point five or better on a four point O scale. Coach Lynch.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, guests, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present before you. Once again, I'd like to congratulate Coach Schwabbi, Coach Cobb, and the baseball team on their great accomplishment, and all the other students that are here on their accomplishments. As Coach Schwabbi said, you know, this was probably one of the most difficult experiences for us as coaches to go through this COVID season. I mean, the adjustments we had to make on the fly, and the things we had to do, was something that none of us ever experienced in our coaching career. So I would like to congratulate them on what they accomplished. On behalf of Illinois High School Football Coaches Association, it's one of the best things that we do as an association, is that we honor student athletes for their accomplishments in the classroom. And as I tell the players, and I tell the parents at the awards night, it's probably the best award that I give out every year. It's when I have to recognize the academic awards, because those awards are not just the awards for the student athletes. Those awards belong to mom and dad. In order to have that commitment in the classroom, it started in kindergarten. And as you move forward in kindergarten and up, it was somebody else that sat on that floor and played with you with those puzzles, it was someone that taught you how to read and read with you at night before you went to bed, and someone that kept you disciplined. So on behalf of the Illinois High School Football Coaches Association, I'd like this time to honor Nicholas Ben, Frank Krieger, and Eric Moreno for their accomplishments on the field.
Guys, would anyone like to say a few words?
Hi, good afternoon, good night, I don't know. I think it goes without saying that you can't receive an award without thanking the people that got you here. So first of all, let me recognize Fenton. I think Fenton has been, I don't know, I don't think I could explain it too well, but there's no school where I feel like you can fully grow and be who you are without being here. I guess, just a lot of different, diverse people, knowing judges, and the staff is amazing. Getting into the staff, two coaches and a lot of teachers have allowed me to be who I am today. Coach Sabala and Coach Lynch have been there for me way, way more than they needed to be. There's no, there's no, there's no question, questioning that. So I love them to death, and without getting emotional, they've just, they've truly arrived at the occasion. And with my two other families, the Ben family and the Krieger family, I, I've never felt so, like, more loved by anybody. I, I can't express my gratitude enough. I think that, I think that they've allowed me to kinda come out of my shell, to be who I am. And football has brought that out of me. I work hard for the academic part of football, I guess, and I balance it all to grow a future for myself. I, I want, I guess, to be more successful. You know, it's always striving to be in a better place than where you're at today, right? And just coming out on top, you know? And being able to look in the mirror, and just being able to count on yourself. But in the background, you have all those people holding you, like people I mentioned. So just again, a quick thank you to everybody, thank you, everybody for being here, congratulations to you all. And a quick thank you to Mr. Cambic, awesome dude. He's awesome. Thank you.
All right, now I'm gonna say something, it's, I never thought I'd be standing here saying this, but I'm gonna say it. If, every, every day I've waken up since I've graduated, I've told myself, if I could redo, not redo, but if I could go back and experience high school again, I would. And now like freshman me, when I was walking through the hallway, I was like, oh, I can't wait to get out of here. But now I'm like, I kinda miss it. But honestly, it's the school, it's the sports, the people around you. One thing I've always said about Fenton is that, well, 'cause I have friends from other schools, whatever it is, I always hear them talk about their schools, I'm like, none of their experiences are like mine. When I come here, one thing that pops out to me is the relationship with teachers. And it's almost like they're your classmates. Yeah, everybody's talking about all this school drama, they don't like the kids at their school. I'm like, it's like weird, 'cause I go to school, and I'm like best friends with my teachers, and best friends with my coaches, and best friends with the principal, whatever it is. So I just love the whole experience, obviously, sports have been great. It's just been nothing but awesome, but yeah. So I just wanna thank my coaches, thank the school. It's more than sports, sports are just a bonus to the experience. And yeah, so thank you for everything.
Hello, so I'm gonna start off with the academic part first. I'd like to thank my coaches, my family, my friends, and most importantly, my teachers. Without them, I couldn't have got this. They pushed me to become who I am today. They really like forced me to do my work, and they really helped me out. But, you know, being at Fenton, it's been a great experience. I built, I've built like so many close relationships. Like I've looked, I look forward to going to school, you know, seeing all my friends, going to classes, and then having sports after. It's really like, it's really like the highlight of my day, you know, just being able to see everyone. And, you know, I'm really, I'm really gonna miss it, but it was really an honor to be a Fenton Bison. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, the next honor is the all-state honor. To me, all-state of football is extremely competitive. It is extremely, extremely competitive. And we're in one of the toughest divisions in football. In football, seven A, six A, and five A are some of the most competitive divisions there are because of the numbers of kids that you're competing against. Dear Frank Krieger, it is our pleasure to welcome you as a member of the Illinois High School Football Coaches Association, six A, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, all-state team honorable mention. You are to be congratulated on your achievements and those of your teammates. As coaches, we know that this honor reflects many hours of sacrifice and hard work by you, your teammates, and coaches. We would also like to congratulate your parents, the many, the many car trips, late meals, and sacrifices that have been made to reflect the love that has been given to you and your, on your road to this honor. Sincerely, Ted Monken, Illinois High School Football Coaches Association, all-state chairman. Congratulations.
Hello again. But this really is a great honor, this is something I've worked really hard for like my whole life. Football's been, football's been a part of who I am, and, you know, most importantly, I like... I'd like to thank the coaches and my teammates for pushing me. Because, you know, the practices aren't easy. They really, like, push you to become a... They really know our potential, and they don't let us settle for anything less. So yeah, I'd like to thank them for that. And most importantly, I'd like to thank my quarterback Nick Ben for, you know, without him, giving me the ball, I couldn't have had this. You know, we've worked really hard together, just like the two of us, going to the park and tossing it around. You know, it's really been a good experience. And most importantly, my boy Eric, up front. Without them, they couldn't get the ball off. So it all really starts with him. And they both really deserved this award too. I don't know why they didn't get it, but it really is an honor. Thank you.
All right, this is fun. I think we're at about halftime, right? Use the athletic analogy. So let's move on to our next recognition, which is softball. So we have Cynthia Ibarra, Kaitlyn Hoffing, and Daniella Tredado. Come on forward, please. We're recognizing their efforts for Class 3A, Third, All-State Third Team. We also want to recognize the softball team this year, which reached 20 wins for just the fifth time in the last 47 years. How about a round of applause for the team? And we'll turn over to Coach Mello.
First of all, thank you to the board and to the administration for having us out for this. I believe I've been doing this for 13 years as the head coach, been coaching here in general since 1995. And this is the first time, and we've had over 25 All-Staters for softball, and this is the first time that we've had anything like this. So I greatly appreciate that, and I know the athletes do as well. Also, congratulations Coach Swabe, Coach Cobb, and Aiden for the baseball success, Coach Lynch, and the football players for your football success, and Coach Hastings for the wrestling success. It's always great when Fenton gets positive publicity, especially in the athletics. I don't teach here, I teach at Bartlett High School. But I'm here for three sports. And as I said, being here since 1995, it hasn't always been looked at in the best light outside of the school here. And one of the lines I like to use with our teams is, for many years, the first question that was always asked when we would get off a bus by other students, other teams, was, "Did you lose?" And I always thought that was strange in that people were asking if we lost. Just, I think that was the assumption. So it's great to see the success that is taking place here. And this year with softball, obviously, as was mentioned by the other coaches, you know, dealing with COVID and having missed the season, one thing that we did is, we never really brought that up. Once we got going in April, we just went. And at the end of our season, which ended prematurely, it was out of our hands, but it ended sooner than it should have. We talked about the fact that they played 37 games in 49 days. And that includes Sundays. So I told them, you take those seven Sundays out of there, and they played 37 games in 42 days. And that was everywhere from Barrington to Waukegan to Champaign. And any of the girls could have been up here tonight. But the three that earned this recognition, and as Coach Lynch said, becoming an All-State athlete is not easy. This year for softball, they only did three teams. In the past, they've done a first, second, third, and honorable mention. So for us to get three on the third team is outstanding. And the first one, unable to be here tonight because she's headed to Nationals for Travel Softball, is, was our sophomore, Daniella Trent Duce. She'll now be a junior. And hopefully, she was able to log in here. I told her to get on the link there, and I know she wanted to be here. But Dani pitched a lot of our really big games for us. And being a sophomore was really her freshman season, because that one, we did not have. And to be a first-year high school softball player, taking the ball, getting in the circle, and facing the top teams that we did, the Barringtons, the South Elgins, the Bartletts, and the Trinities, the Tafts, those that we played, I mean, she didn't back down from anybody. And there's gonna be a common theme here to all three of them, but she just went out there and she competed. And when she was done in the circle, she'd come up and she put up great offensive numbers. So she earned her All-State recognition, both in the circle and at the plate. And we're looking forward to what she gives us for the next two years. Our second one here, again, it was another sophomore, and that's Kaitlyn. And Kaitlyn and I, before she even played a game, and this was gonna be her freshman season, she was also gonna be up with us on varsity that year. I remember telling her, "Kaitlyn, you'll be an All-State player and hit .450," because we made her a slapper, which is just a lefty batter. You just want to put the ball on the ground. And I told her, "You'll be an All-Stater batting .450 if you just put the ball on the ground," because she's so fast. And I believe she actually finished higher than .450. And obviously, it was recognized as an All-Stater, not only for that, but she started the year at second base. And then, as we started to progress and moved towards what was gonna be our top lineup, she took over the shortstop position. So she was our leadoff batter and playing shortstop on her first year on the varsity. And that was recognized by many, many of the coaches, hence the reason she got this honor. And again, Kaitlyn is just a fierce competitor. So looking forward to two more years with Kaitlyn on the basketball court and on the softball diamond. And then finally, our third one here, our senior, who now is off to play at Carthage. Cynthia here, she has probably the rare distinction. I don't know about all the other Fenton sports, but I know, being the head softball coach, as I said, for the past 13 years, she's the only one that we've had that was a captain as a freshman. That's how much Cynthia showed to not only the coaches, but to the team, her freshman year. So she was a four-year captain, which is very rare. And that speaks volumes to the type of person that Cynthia is. I mean, I know Coach Swabe talked about leaders, and you want to follow the right leader. Well, it was great to have not only Cynthia, but a lot of the seniors that we had as great leaders. But Cynthia is the one here tonight. And for her to be a leader for the young girls in the program and just students in general in the school is outstanding. And then on the softball field, Cynthia did it all. She played short for us, she played third for us, she pitched for us. Her sophomore year, she was our primary pitcher when we were in the conference race. Her sophomore year, we gave her the ball. We'd been alternating between three girls. We gave her the ball. She won every single game that led us to winning the conference back in 2019. Then she went to travel, didn't pitch as much. So we had Dani, and that was the reason Dani did a lot more of the pitching. But when we got to the regionals this year, Cynthia got the ball in game one in the regionals and responded with a shutout in the regional semifinal. And then, for the regional championship game, went over and played a solid third base. And I can't say enough about Cynthia. Gonna miss her. We already went through all this, so there won't be any tears tonight, I promise. With the nine seniors that we had, nine of our 13 were seniors. So, you know, I wish Cynthia nothing but the best at Carthage. She'll be at Carthage. We have two others playing locally, one at Elmer's, one at North Central. So it'll be great to get out and see them play. But again, a leader and a true competitor, Cynthia. And that's the three of them up there. As I look at that screen, competitor. And that's all we can ask for, is that they go out and compete against everybody. And those three answered that call every single day. So thank you to them, thank you to all of you. Thank you to the parents, thank you to everybody here. I'll turn it over here. I know Kaitlyn's gonna take the mic for a little bit. Kaitlyn?
I just want to thank my coaches, all three of them, Foz, Illich, and of course, Mello. Especially Mello for making me switch to slapping, because obviously, it worked out in some sense. I also want to thank my parents. My dad especially, because he came to every single one of my games, even the ones in Champaign. And even though he did miss my one home run. My mom too, they constantly supported me at home and on the field. And I also want to thank my teammates, because they made the season as great as it was and as fun as it could be.
Hello. So first, I want to thank my dad, because he's the one that got me started with sports. He's the one that put me in T-ball. When I was four or five years old, I couldn't have made that decision myself. I appreciate everything he's done for me, all the resources and opportunities he's given me. Next, I want to thank Mello, of course, Illich, and Foz, because they gave me the opportunity to play on varsity as a freshman, and it was very scary. It was very different for me, but it was something that... It was an opportunity that not a lot of people get, and I was glad that I got. I also... Sorry, I'm nervous. I also want to thank Issa. She was, she graduated a couple of years ago. My freshman year, she was a captain, and she helped me figure out how to lead a team, because I knew that I was gonna be leading for the next three years. And it was very nerve-wracking, because I was younger than some of them, and I didn't know how to lead a team. But having Issa there, for me, it helped, and I'm glad. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, last but not least, representing our wrestling program, Noelia Vasquez, and is a girls' wrestling state champion. And Sofia Sosa is a state qualifier. Those that have been around here will all know that there's a tremendous wrestling tradition here at Fenton. And this is just a new chapter, obviously. And we're gonna turn it over to Coach Hastings here in a minute. But we just want to thank these young ladies for their efforts. Coach?
Good evening, and thank you again for recognizing everyone, recognizing these ladies, recognizing the athletes that were talked about earlier. I had the honor of being involved with a lot of these previous athletes in the classroom or in athletics, and I'm not surprised that they've accomplished what they have. So congratulations to all of you guys and all the coaches. So I think from a wrestling perspective, we had a season, we were grateful for that. We did not think we were going to have a season. I think in October, they made the call that they were gonna push us back to the summer. We were thankful that we had that opportunity. We were 15-5 in duel meets, so kind of like Coach Mello mentioned, we competed 20 times. We usually wrestled 21, 22 duels. We got 20 in. And we had a really good season. We got to wrestle outside. For 12 of our duel meets were held outside, which has never happened before. Eric was there for one, being a little loud, which was nice. We don't have that often, so thank you, Eric, supporting his peers. So it was an awesome, it was an awesome season. It ended up going very well, you know, especially considering everything. We had barbecues outside, got to go do workouts at the lake and stuff like that. But then talking about these ladies. So this is our second year of having a women's wrestling team. Girls' wrestling is the fastest-growing sport in the country. Looked up some information earlier today. So since 2000, it's grown like 620%. 32 states recognize girls' wrestling, and 90 colleges offer girls' wrestling programs. So it's a great opportunity. You know, I think for any wrestler going up into the wrestling room, it takes a lot of courage. They get pushed mentally and physically. It's very combative, it's one-on-one. There's no hiding. You know, there's a lot of... There's, like a lot of sports, a lot of dedication and discipline is required. But I would say, for the females, it takes even more courage going up there without it being, you know, ingrained in the community like it is for some of the guys and stuff like that. So Noelia, this was her second year competing in our program. She had a really good year last year. But this year, just... And because of the COVID situation, we did not have as many chances to compete. But I think she was 13-0 on this season. You know, and at the state tournament, we really didn't know what the competition was gonna be like, just because we didn't get tons of opportunities. We knew she was really good. Both Sofia and Noelia are extremely hard workers. They were so dedicated, put in an extra work. I was super proud of them. But going to the state tournament, we didn't know what the competition would be like. And Noelia did great, she competed really well. She, in the finals match, was put on her back twice in a headlock. And the second time, I didn't think she was gonna fight off, and she did. And then she ended up pinning her opponent, so that just showed so much heart. You know, and that was an amazing way to kind of end her season as a state champion. So again, congratulations to Noelia for being a state champion. Awesome job. And then Sofia's a freshman. So came out for wrestling for the first time. You know, obviously, had some experience with some physical sports in the football program and did well there from everything I understand. But was, again, super dedicated, worked really hard, had a lot of success, got better throughout the season, as would be expected. And then in Springfield, competed great. Beat one really super good girl, who was beating girls, who was at the national tournament. who, uh, who was beating girls, who was at the national tournament, uh, just amazing how, how well she competed and ended up taking sixth place in the state as a first-year freshman. So, uh, the potential for them for next year, no pressure, is, uh, is pretty, is pretty, uh, exciting. So congratulations to Sofia and Noelia. And thank you for your guys' hard work and dedication.
Um, okay, hello. Uh, so first of all, I just wanted to thank, uh, the coaching staff for sure, I don't think I would've been up there, um, up in the wrestling room if it wasn't for them for encouraging, um, me and like the first-year girls, which included, you know, Lupita, Brianna, Tiara, and A- Angie, uh, to go up there and compete. Um, I was really like glad that we had a season this year, which was surprising due to the pandemic, but, um, I was really thankful. Um, I also wanted to thank the, uh, Fenton staff for, you know, supporting and encouraging their students to, you know, do like physical activities, be it sports, you like just hobbies, going outside or going like for a walk or something, to get their mind off of the stressing times, um. Yeah, I also wanted to thank Sofia for being my, uh, my buddy up there in the wrestling room, it was, it was really great, um, to have someone always there, you know, always pushing and it was great. And yeah, that's it.
Um, I would just like to start off by saying thank you to Coach Hastings, um, for pushing me past my limits, especially in the wrestling room with conditioning and all that. Um, and definitely with my mom being very flexible with all the times and whatnot. Um, and definitely Noelia for tolerating me as well. Um, I know I could be a lot of a handful sometimes. Um, and just thank you all very much.
Okay, again, congratulations to the community. Now we open the floor for public comments, do we have any public comments tonight? No public comments, great. Next we do information items. James?
Absolutely, we got two, four, six items here. Uh, we're gonna talk about in-person instruction update, COVID update, equity report, ESAR grant update, community report twenty twenty-one, and the two FOIAs we received. So real quickly, what are the district priorities as it comes up for the next school year? We're still in the global pandemic, we know that, we're keeping an eye on the variant and so forth, uh, numbers are creeping, creeping back up and I will get that to in a minute. But our priorities remain the same, safety and wellness, learning and communication. Just some timelines in regards to the guidelines, you've seen this on, on different news channels, CNN and so forth about the CDC, IDPH and all of that other guidance coming from the states. On July ninth, CDC school guidance came out and it was immediately adopted by IDPH. That following week, Fenton put out something to the community saying, look, we're gonna embrace this like we have done for the last eighteen months. On July twenty-sixth, IDPH provided a frequently asked questions, that was just two days ago, uh, regarding the CT, CDC guidance, so we thought we were in the clear. And then yesterday, July twenty-seventh, surprise, CDC put out another guidance, right, Mr. Rizensky?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, uh, part two. Uh, so this morning, we put that out to staff in regards to basically, it was about masking. We are expecting more from the Illinois Department of Public Health, as you can see the pattern, something is put out, then there's a frequently asked questions, sort of guidelines for the rest of the schools to follow. Depending on the safety and the health of the situation, there will be more guidance to follow from those two health, uh, institutions. So, what is the district's in-person tentative plan? But first, let's start with this. Number one, our goal is to return safely to in-person instruction, all students as best we can, so all per, all students in the building. We're gonna continue to follow CDC, Illinois Department of Public Health, the DuPage County Health Department's guidelines. And number three, return as close to a normal school year as possible. Return safely to in-person instruction for all students, there's a quote there from the CDC, students' benefits from in-person learning and safely return to in-person instruction in the fall twenty twenty-one is their priority. And that is also our priority. We're gonna provide and promote opportunities of students and staff and community to be vaccinated. We had a total of ten vaccinations last year, I think that contributes to why Fenton, uh, Bensonville, uh, to be, uh, when the pandemic started was ranked number three in DuPage in regards to positivity rates, to about twelve and thirteen currently. Uh, so continue with vaccination, maintain practice around ventilation, hand washing, and respiratory efficacy, respond to changes in guidance from the federal, state, and, uh, local departments. In addition, okay, in returning safely, uh, we're gonna support our students through SEL, uh, um, and other programmings that's similar to social emotional learning. We, uh, this one is really straightforward, we're gonna follow the guidelines as well, I think that's key, it keeps us focused, that's our north star in regards to keeping our students and staff safe. Um, as you know, CDC came out yesterday, which is embraced by, uh, uh, IDPH, masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors regardless of vaccination status. So everyone, anyone in the building has to put on a mask. Students, teachers, and staff should stay at home when they have signs of any infection, AKA if you're sick, don't come, right? Uh, that's, that's the norm, that's the, our new reality. Three, vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention, we're gonna continue with that. And lastly, maintain at least three feet, that's your, uh, uh, social distancing. Return to as close to a normal school year as possible, we're going back to our traditional eight-period day with breakfast and lunch being served, okay? All activities, clubs, and athletic activities, uh, will return in person and will allow spectators at our event, if it's in our event, spectators must wear a mask. Remote and hybrid learning as we know it will not be, uh, an instructional option at this time. Utilization of our facilities, which includes but not limited to gyms, auditorium, fieldhouse, locker rooms, and auditoriums will be open again. All right, timeline, our planned timeline. So, uh, last week, we received the CDC guidance, IDPH, uh, this week, we're gonna have, we're gonna, I'm gonna present today the tentative plan for the return to school. And next week, we're gonna announce our finalized plan for the school. Okay, as you guys know, school starts August eleventh. Here's our tentative in-person plan, this is pretty close to our finalized plan and I know I've shared this with you a couple times, it's pretty much what CDC is saying. So masking for all individuals in the building, staff, students, visitors, and so forth, if you're sick, stay at home, continue to promote and provide opportunities for students to get vaccinated as well as staff and community. Masks must be worn on the buses and in school vehicles, including driver's ed vehicles. Masks not a requirement outside of the building, maintain a distance, uh, of more than three feet as much as possible. Parents will certify their commit, uh, their commitment to monitor students' health every day. So basically, parents are going, John, are you sick today? You're sore, you got a sore throat, you got a fever, I gotta keep you home. Okay? We're gonna continue with our layered COVID mitigation, that's hand washing, our masking, our deep cleaning every evening, our ionization in our ventilation, our, our, our custodians basically zapping, using their ionization gun to clean e- every room, um, uh, obviously handing out masks to students that doesn't have it, and we're gonna have sanitizers everywhere. Follow IDPH, CDC guidelines and their protocols, and changes from the federal, state, or local health officials, or any increase of illness at school could change our plan. So basically, that's a, hey, look, we don't know what's gonna happen in three or four months, let alone October, right? So we want that, that, that flexibility to change our plan as it changes.
I have a question.
Yes.
A mask not required outside the building, so if there's a sore, if there's a pain in the sore outside, it...
There's no mask, right. Could change. So here's the unknown, right, unknowns remains, okay? The unknowns are changing guidance moving forward, the changing guidelines from CDC and the Illinois Department of, of Public Health. Uh, what are the unknowns? Vaccines, uh, we're waiting for the twelve years and youngest to come out, there's talk about January, February for that to come out. And as you go, uh, know, there's a variant out there, definitely, uh, unknown. And we don't know what the research is saying in regards to that. And obviously, the unknown still is the health departments and how they were, they will re- uh, react to some of, uh, the changes, uh, uh, in regards to the, uh, COVID. All right. Next slide here, put on my glasses, COVID update. Uh, real quickly, I think this is about vaccination. Um, let's just start off with the top of it, I can't see it, so I'll, I'll go to the board. Last week, when I reported to you guys, it was one, one point nine percent positivity rate, as of today, it's four percent, okay? Keeping an eye on that, okay? We are in, um, moderate, uh, vaccine, uh, variant cases, it's jumping up, uh, we continue to monitor, monitor, uh, the COVID metrics. So, um, you've hea- heard it everywhere, uh, that, uh, in general, in our country, uh, COVID cases are going up. In regards to DuPage, let's get, bring it closer to home, uh, we're two C's, all age group. You see a little peak over here to the right. And there, here, here we are, so hopefully, it stays or goes down here, but indicators are showing that this is gonna increase. Okay, next slide. This is just eight school kids, this is just, you know, because it's basically from zero to eighty years old, this is from zero to nineteen, school age kids. See the trend there, okay? Next slide. Okay. Beginning of pandemic, we were number three, number two, Bensonville was right here at two-five, twenty-five thirty-one, we're up there, we're near the bottom, we're in the middle, lower middle. Towns that are, uh, the highest in regards to COVID cases are your Naperville's, your Wheaton, Addison, uh, and so forth, but we've done a great job, great, great job. Next slide. Here's the trend, CDC is, uh, using basically a four, uh, tier system in regards to positivity rate, low, moderate, substantial, and high. High is red, you can see we're in the fires coming, coming from the south. Okay? Top right, north, um, is yellow, uh, northern part of Illinois is still yellow, but you can see the trend coming. So we're urging, we're now mandating folks to be, um, vaccinated, strongly recommending that everyone get vaccinated. Next slide. Uh, in regards to Illinois, uh, fully vaccinated twelve years and older is fifty-six percent, Illinois population eighteen plus is, uh, fif- I'm sorry, fifty-six, fifty-eight percent, and sixty-five and older, seventy-five percent. Next slide. DuPage leads the way, okay, in all of Illinois, sixty percent of our pa- uh, our residents are vaccinated, number one in Illinois, I think number two or three in the whole of the United States. DuPage is doing a househanding job. Equity report. Any questions with the COVID numbers, real quick, I'll continue to brief the board, you guys watch it on the news as well, uh, we will, uh, once again, our priority is safety and wellness. We'll move on to the equity report, which will be presented by, uh, Mr. Barago via video.
Hello. My name is Mike Barago. For the last fourteen years, I've had the pleasure of teaching social studies, computer science, and providing professional development to staff as an instructional technology coordinator. Today, I'm excited to provide the first district equity report as your director of educational equity and innovation. The first item that I would like to address with you is our equitable teaching practices at Fenton High School. More specifically, on July eighth and ninth, we had twenty-seven participants in our blended and personalized learning PD, or professional development. What is blended and personalized learning? Blended and personalized learning is a method of teaching that allows students to learn at their own pace while teachers facilitate learning for all the, levels of learners. In short, teachers provide learning content that allows students to complete on their own using their Chromebooks. The teacher's role shifts from teaching in front of the classroom to monitoring student progress. Data about student progress helps teachers determine and prioritize support for individuals and/or groups of students. Students who are progressing at pace or those that are advancing quickly are able to leverage the extra time to work on other classes that they may need more time on. Essentially, students gain the skills of becoming responsible and independent learners. In addition, they are provided opportunities to practice what it's like to be a college student. Out of all of our participants in the professional development, eighty-six point one percent of our teachers will, are planning to implement the blended and personalized learning teaching model. With the increased number of classes participating in this type of teaching, the addition of the English lounge, the math lab, and our locker lounges will allow us to co- accommodate the increase of students learning independently. The next and final item in the report is about our equity action plan, or EAP. The EAP was presented June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one at a board meeting. At the presentation, Dr. Yvette Dubio, Michelle Papa-Nicolaou, strand leaders, and other members of the district equity leadership team provided an overview about the plan and how we are going to improve equitable practices in our district. The team also provided measures of progress for each strand. Before I talk about the dashboard that we are developing, I'd like to celebrate what's happening in August. We will fulfill one of our goals within the EAP by providing all new staff members with DEI training, which stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now currently, we are working on the site that you see here, which is our EA, uh, EAP or Equity Action Plan Dashboard. Let's take a look at it. The Equity Action Plan Dashboard is designed to provide progress monitoring for the plan itself. While this is still in working progress, there will be videos, or at least a video that will be added on here to provide an introductory information about the EAP. More importantly, the dashboard provides information about each strand in terms of their memberships, the goals that they have, the tasks that they want to accomplish or that we want to accomplish, and the status in, and how we are accompli- accomplishing those tasks. So let's go out and take a, uh, go out and visit, uh, one of these items. If we take a look at professional development, you can see the goals for professional development, and then of course, the different tasks that professional development a- as a group decide that they want to tackle. They can take a look at, the users can take a look at the status for each of the goals and all, each of the item tasks and see what they have completed, what's in progress and so on. And then of course, scrolling down, uh, users can see who the members are, uh, for each of the strand. Again, this is still in working progress, we are developing this to be as user-friendly as possible, but ultimately, we want to provide the community, the district, all of our stakeholders information about how we are doing with our EAP or Equity Action Plan. That is it for our equity report, thank you very much and have a good day.
Thank you, Mike. As you know, Board, we do this every month. Um, for last year, we've been committed to our equity journey for at least seven, eight years here and we're gonna continue to do that. We're very excited for Mr. Barago to be our Director of Equity and Innovation, he's gonna do a fantastic job, as he said, uh, as he said, he's been here at Fenton for approximately fourteen years.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, he mentioned personalized learning, um, and that eighty-six percent or so of the teachers will be utilizing personalized learning. He mentioned personalized learning with the computer and that they would be facilitating. Um, could maybe Mr. Papa-Nicolaou just explain that a little bit further, does that mean no lectures, that they'll be learning? How does that work? Could you explain that a little further?
Yeah, sure. And I, I was a little unclear, I think out of the twenty-seven participants who came to the training...
Yes.
There's eighty-six percent of those... There's 86% of those teachers are going to be using the blended personalized approach. So I, and I'll explain it very similar to how he explained it. Students will be in the classroom with their teachers one to two to three times a week. Depending on their progress, they may have opportunities those other two or three days a week to work more independently and take responsibility and ownership for their learning. The format of that can look very different depending on the content. It could be videos of the teachers lecturing. It could be, it could be question answers. It could be them doing a project. So really, it depends on the content, but some of the time, they would be learning more independently, and some of the time, they would be led by their teachers. And a lot of the time with their teachers is more conferencing and facilitating than actually like lecture.
Okay. Cause I hear something about, something about them utilizing space outside of the classroom.
Right.
So how is the teacher monitoring their progress if they're not actually in that space with them?
Yeah, so they use the learning management system of Google Classroom. Sometimes they use other technologies like Pair Deck or EdPuzzle, where students can actually respond to, on digital programs, and they can get their feed, they can get the students' responses, give feedback on those, and use the digital platform.
Yeah, I think maybe the, the better question, I think maybe, I don't know if I'm speaking for you, but is, is the, the level of engagement from each student with the instructor, right? And then also the level of connection.
Yeah.
That each instructor and each student have. Can you work on explaining that a little bit?
Yeah, I think that's probably the primary benefit of a personalized blended approach, is because you're not trying to teach one teacher to 28 students, you're allowing yourself to release some students while you're working with smaller groups or individuals, really establishing that relationship and being able to create those stronger feedback loops with students, instead of trying to do it with everybody at the same time. So when you're using these blended approaches, you can release some students, work with others, the next day, some other students will be released, and other students will stay.
So how will they determine which students will use the blended learning?
Yeah, one of the most typical ways, and it's kind of like the starting point, when teachers enter into this blended, they might do something like, if you have an A and a B in my class right now, and they check at the beginning of every week, you can go ahead and use some more independent time, and I'll, you can access all of your assignments and activities on the digital platform. If you need me, I'm here, I'm always in the classroom, but if you're successful, you can work more independently. In other areas, they might say at the beginning of the week, we're working on transitional writing. You, 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 Molly, Jack, and Jane, you all have shown me mastery of this, so I'm gonna ask you to go ahead and move along with your learning, but some of you, I'd like you to stay with me, because that isn't a skill that you've actually mastered. So sometimes it might be on their overall grade, where other times, it might be on the specific skill that's being addressed in the classroom.
My question is, we keep saying we're releasing these students. Where are they, and who's supervising them?
Yeah, so we're releasing them from the classroom to learn in other areas of the building. So we're expanding the learning environments throughout the building, and our learning labs, like our writing lab, he called it the English lounge, we have some locker lounges, we have a math lab. Those will be staffed, the labs. Some of the loungy areas might just be staffed by, like a security staff. Others are actually going to have tutors in those, in those spaces. So even though those students might be successful, they might wanna access some help from an adult here and there. So there, there will be staff that are certified teachers in those spaces.
I'm assuming there's some checks and balances. We're releasing Susie from room 201.
Oh, yeah.
And we're gonna know Susie gets to 103.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And she didn't get lost somewhere in between.
Yeah, and really.
Or Lily, or Johnny, or Joey, or.
Yeah, and really, because it's a weekly monitoring, you know, if, if some, if a student hasn't really shown the responsibility that they need to, they lose that privilege, right, eventually? But there are lanyards that are involved, there's scanning into certain areas, and so we, we wanna.
Just in this day and age of accountability, I gotta ask before.
Well, and we just wanna know that our students are safe.
Yes, that's the biggest issue.
And where they're supposed to be. So, yeah. So we're not necessarily, it's not an open campus, but it is open within the building, giving them that sense of self-ownership, and really that, being able to grow their self-responsibility.
Even good people can make mistakes, as long as there's the checks and balance, and we're ensuring the safety and accountability. God forbid the event of a fire alarm, or this, or that.
Yes.
We know where everybody is when we're getting that.
Yeah, Mike Barago during his training with the teachers provided guidelines, there'll be communication to families, so they understand what these procedures are. You know, we see a lot of students that are motivated by the opportunity to learn this way, but also thrive and, and make some great progress academically through this, because they're not held back by a teacher teaching to the middle, right? We call that teaching to the middle, when you have a group of 28, and you're like, okay, I'll just teach wherever the, the middle ground is. They can actually individualize and personalize the learning for the students based on their needs. So we're pretty excited that so many teachers are stepping up and trying this out. I think, you know, the time that we spent teaching remotely during the pandemic helped teachers really grow their capacity in using digital tools, to the point now that they can fully execute this type of instruction.
Sounds like a great plan, and I like it. I just, the accountability thing, past life comes back to haunt me when we ask, where's Susie?
Yeah.
We don't know.
Yeah, we.
Well, that kinda changes the perspective of things.
And I just wanna make sure that it's not, watch this video, and then go do it on your own. I wanna make sure that teachers are.
Yeah, it's not kind of enemy.
Yeah. Or, you know, do, look at this teacher's self, and, you know, I wanna make sure that we're not headed down that path of, you're gonna do this on a computer by yourself, and then I'm just here to answer a question. That's.
No, they'll be, yeah, they'll be, I understand.
Your instruction will not.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. No, there, there's still in-person instruction, and I think the majority of what this allows is actual conferencing with students to talk about their learning. And just because we're doing, learning outside of the classroom, doesn't mean students will always be learning by themselves either. Group projects are still going to be part of this, project-based learning. We, we use a variety of tools, so I think, thanks for bringing it, and we're definitely something that we, we don't wanna see happen either.
So, so speaking to that, we, we think about accountability, right? We think about checks and balances, so I'm sure we've already thought about the processes in place from the student point of view, but also from the instructor point of view.
Right.
Okay.
And remind the board, safety is always our priority, and this is not our first year doing blended learning. Moving on, talking about teaching in the middle, we're gonna talk about ESER, okay? As you know, we've been talking about ESER for about a year now, but, and it's quite complicated, so we continue to review it, and as John said, hold folks accountable, okay? There's three pots of money. We call it ESER 1, ESER 2, and ESER 3, came back, way back in March to, as a CARES Act for, to react to COVID. That was approximately $186,000. We use that for technology. We use that for professional development in regards to remote learning. Then we receive ESER 2 and ESER F, what I call ESER 3. A bigger amount of money, ESER 2 is about $800,000, and the other one, 1.6 million. ESER will be utilized in many ways. Right now, we're purchasing desks and furniture and tables to accommodate social distancing in the cafeteria and learning labs. We're using it for personnel, kinda like Mike Barago with his position of Director of Equity and Innovation, some of that ionization project, $100,000 worth, to improve our ventilation, PPE, and other stuff like that. I know Bruce is gonna do a budget report here, a tentative budget report, but Bruce, is there anything you wanna add in regards to the quick update here, or are you gonna hold off?
I just, yeah, I mean, we have those three buckets, as James said, and ESER 3 is the biggest pot of money. We've written for part of that, we still have more to write for their, that, and that'll be reflected in the final budget. But right now, we have some staffing levels that, to address, you know, learning opportunities, learning loss for our students this year. So that's included in the budget, and that'll be talked about a little bit later tonight. But yeah, that's, that's kinda the overview of where we're at with ESER right now.
So once again, during his budget, tentative budget review, he will talk about ESER. Moving on to E, Community Report 2021, Rick.
Hi, real quick, I've been looking at this last week in the mail, but we saw it tonight, it was just a small fraction, but it also did, so anybody who's watching, if you want extras, or you didn't get a copy, just get up in the main office, we'll get you a copy, but you're all a success, you did all the great things for the, you know, I got one of these to learn recently, so thank you to all the staff, and they sent me their stories, it helped me to make connections with the students, so I could tell their stories.
Thanks for making that.
Okay, moving on to the FOIA, as I reported, we received two FOIA, one from Smart Care, which is a private company, which works with governmental agencies, basically collecting purchase orders, okay? They collect it, so they send a FOIA to us, and we, we give them all of our purchase order quarterly. So that's a normal thing. And the last one there is Equip for Equality, which is a law firm, and basically what they did is asking for three years' worth of data in regards to suspension and expulsion for the high schools in DuPage. We do not know what they're gonna utilize that for, but it was a FOIA, I think they're doing a study, and we'll see what happens.
Anything other? Okay. Let's get to Consent Agenda. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the Consent Agenda?
Just real quickly, Board, as you guys know, last June, we had 23 policies. None of them new. It was, a majority of them was due to a five-year review by press, which is part of your association, the Illinois Association of School Board. We went through it very thoroughly. Thank you, Dr. Benson, and Mary Timmons for putting that together. You had a month to review it. There's really, I think, there's really no changes there, pretty much. It was an update. We're recommending that the Board approve the, those 23 policies. None of them new again.
Questions? Comments? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Some will?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Wheaton?
Yes.
Seageron?
Yes.
Lee? Yes. Reddenski?
Yes.
Regal? Yes. Can you call phone?
Yes. And motion passed. We get to discussion items. First, we'll talk about the tentative budget.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, it's that time of year again, the tentative budget for the 2021, 22 school year. And I wanted to start out, I know you have a budget memo that is included in your board packet, but just for the benefit of the public, I wanted to read the first paragraph, just so everyone can hear that. The 2020, 21, 22 tentative budget is presented to the Board of Education for review and further discussion. This year's budget is unlike any previous budgets, due to the unpredictability of events that occurred during the 2020, 21 school year. Many expenses did not occur or were greatly altered due to the pandemic. Fortunately, revenue sources remained relatively stable, and as a result, the district ended with positive results. The budget for the 2020, 21, 22 fiscal year is balanced with a modest surplus projected among the operating funds, and the budget will continue to be refined up until the final adoption. So as we kinda move into the slideshow presentation, I wanted to start out and talk a little bit about the budget process and the, and the adoption piece, and kinda the mechanics of the budget, and then we'll get more specific to our budget and what that looks like for this school year. So legal requirements are listed up there. We prepare in tentative form, which you're reviewing tonight. It'll be available at least 30 days prior to adoption. The public hearing with public notice will be published in the newspaper. It has to be adopted by September 30th. Our September board meeting's the 15th. And then, of course, we submit it to the Illinois State Board of Education for adoption. The factors that impact the budget, and I'm sure some of these seem obvious, but I'll run through them quickly. Fund balance, the property tax levy or real estate taxes, projected enrollments, staffing levels and benefits, collective bargaining agreements, capital projects, infrastructure, long-term revenue and expenditure projections, and deficit spending budget reduction plans. So here's the funds that we maintain in the district. So the bolded funds, 10, 20, 40, 50, and 70 are what's considered the operating funds. So what, what do we need to operate the district with? Are, to pay for our salaries, to clean our buildings, to run our buses, all those types of things are referred to as the operating funds. The fund 30, 60, and 90 are considered special purpose funds, so they have a specific purpose for what they're levied for and used for. The debt service, kind of earlier, what we heard this evening from Mr. Grossi regarding debt service, that would be a single purpose, special purpose fund to pay for debt service, and that would be the only thing you could use that for. So that's kind of how that looks in terms of the operating funds and the purpose of them. And then this slide just shows those funds again, but you may be aware of this, but the operating funds are subject to the tax cap, so the property tax extension limitation law, better known as the tax cap, limits your levy, what you can tax up to the CPI or 5%, whichever is less. So those are the limitations on that. So your revenue is restricted by those parameters. Our revenue sources, we kinda broke them out in local, state, and federal sources. The property taxes, of course, are there locally, the corporate personal property replacement taxes, which are dispersed by the Illinois Department of Revenue. Student and other fees, such as athletic admissions and late fees, that type of thing, would fall into that bucket. And then interest on investments, which will be down dramatically this year, the projection was down last year as well. If any of you, I'm sure, are, have investments in CDs, you know that they aren't paying very well, if anything at all, right now. And then the state sources, evidence-based funding, we're entitled tier four, so we don't get really any new revenue from the state for that, with this funding source. And that was formerly general state aid, so some of you may be familiar with that term, but it's referred to as evidence-based funding now. And then we have our mandated categorical payments, grants, state aid particularly, and we have some special education grants as well, but the bulk of that would be our transportation state aid that comes from the state. And we're expecting a big drop there too, just because of how the program ran last year. And then the federal sources, so we have a couple of new ones that we've been talking to you all along about, but Title 1, 2, and 3 are continuing, IDEA grants, we've been receiving, Perkins, we've been receiving. And then those three new ones, ESER 1, which started this past year, and ESER 2 and 3, which we're budgeting for this year. And then finally, the National School Lunch Program, which is a federal program that we receive reimbursement for the meals that we serve. So what types of expenditures are included in the budget? And we, on the budget form that you'll see when we formally adopt this in September, it's referred to as the function, but I'll classify it as a type of expenditure. Instructional programs, support services, those really primarily are budgeted within the educational fund. The operations and maintenance fund, that would be where our buildings and ground staff and all the things to do with building maintenance would be in that category. Technology, that would be funded with, primarily with education fund, funds. Transportation, of course, is out of that fund for bus drivers and to run our transportation program. Capital projects are other, that may be included in any one of the funds, including the capital projects fund itself, depending on what you're trying to accomplish and receiving it for. And then finally, debt. And then finally, debt service. And then the objects, it breaks it down a little bit further in terms of how the budget is classified, salaries, employee benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital outlay dues, fees and other, and tuition. And then, so here, we're going to get into some specifics about this, our budget this year, and some of the key drivers with revenues. And revenues, as we said, last year were relatively stable, they weren't as volatile as the expenses, they are a little more predictable, we know our property taxes are relatively stable, state aid's relatively stable, and federal as well. But property taxes are projected to increase 3.3%, so our levy, actually, just to clarify, is not increasing by that much, but it's a timing issue because we're on a cash-based reporting of how we report our funds, and so that, that's kind of why that looks a little bit higher, but our actual levy is 1.4% we're projecting to receive this year. Local revenues down, are expected to decrease, the personal property replacement taxes, investments, student fees, we're projecting a 16.2% drop there. Evidence-based funding is held flat, that's what we just talked about from the state. Other state aid, we're projecting a decrease of at least 2.4%, the state transportation claim will be submitted next month, so we'll have better numbers on that for our final budget, but we are expecting that to drop just because of, we did less transporting last year, so, and that funding comes, is in a year, a year and rears. And then federal sources, title grants, ESSER Perkins, that's where our big jump is, 71.9% so that seems, it is a pretty substantial jump, but ESSER's really what's driving that increase there. So, overall, revenue in the operating funds are increasing by four and a half percent is what the projection is. And then on the expenditure side, again, we're comparing this, these budgeted expenses to our actual activity last year, so some of them are going to, you're going to see some rather large swings, just because of how things unfolded last year, and they just didn't materialize many of the expenses, but in any event, the salaries are increasing 6.1%, that does increase, add, include some added positions that are going to be funded with ESSER funds. Benefits, the corresponding benefits that go along with that are four and a half percent. Purchase services, 41.5%, that includes some grant purchases, our food service and management fees, things like that, we are paying more on our food service and management fees just because we're serving more meals and on more days, but our reimbursement is higher as well, so to kind of offset that. Supplies and materials, up almost 63% again, we had an extremely low activity last year, and then coupled with grant purchases, Mr. Ontango mentioned about the furniture purchases, that's over $400,000, that's, that's boosting that line item up, but again, ESSER funded. Equipment up 53.4%. Again, that budget was held flat, but we had really no activity last year, so it's, it's a $55,000 budget, it looks like a dramatic increase, but the dollar-wise, it's, it's not a lot of money. And then our tuition increased 12.8% and that's really tied to enrollment and what we're anticipating for placements to outside placement schools and facilities. So, overall, operating fund expenditures projected to increase 11.3%. And just, just so the Board, I think you're probably aware of this, but just so, some of you may not have been, we're here when we approved some of these things last year, but some of those expenses, major cost expenses have already been approved and are included in the budget, the collective bargaining agreements, health insurance renewals, technology purchases, ESSER grant expenses, that include, you know, staffing supplies as well, so those things have already been approved, pre-approved by the Board, they're included here now, but just so you, much of this budget work has already been approved by the Board before you get this, actually, so you're ahead of yourself, so congratulations on that. So, some of the budget initiatives, return to learn, yay, students are coming back, we're thrilled, it's great to hear students, you walk out of the office, you hear kids in the building, what a wonderful thing to hear. Strategic plan continuation, that'll, that'll go on, and we're excited about that, technology enhancements, Mr. Batson, Dr. Batson can talk about that probably at length, so I'll leave it there. Adherence to regulating agency's safety and cleaning protocols, we'll continue to maintain those standards, Mr. Ontango mentioned some of that earlier, in terms of these sanitizing the classrooms, the backpacks, the, just all the safety protocols, masks, social distancing, all those things, we'll continue to be vigilant about safety and security in the facility, it's always critical. Custodial cleaning needs, we will continue to budget for some of those cleaning PPE supplies and other cleaning supplies, we'll include that in ESSER funds, so that, some of that, a lot of that'll be offset by, by grant funds for those added costs. Transportation safety, of course, is paramount, and then food services as well, that continues to be a big program that we pretty much run seven days a week throughout the year, so it's, it's quite, quite, grown quite a bit. And that'll continue through next year. So, some of the ESSER initiatives, I've talked a lot about this, but here's some more specifics, and this, the bulk of these listed here are out of ESSER II, and we'll have more details for you at the, our next budget presentation in September for the ESSER III specifics. But the Director of Equity and Innovation, who you kind of viewed earlier this evening, SEL counselor, we're bringing on board a social worker, we're expanding her time to a full-time person, our learning lab supports, as we mentioned, we'll, we'll staff that, we'll also equip it with furnitures, learning spaces throughout the school building, as Mrs. Papa Nicolau talked about earlier, so we're excited about that. Student desks and chairs, we're excited about that as well, and really, that's going to help us with our space limitations and social distancing. And our air quality improvement, a critical area that we are just about done with, I think we're just in doing our final punch list items, and, but that, that's a, that's a big area that we're happy to have done and behind us and moving forward. So, this chart, I know it's kind of a busy chart, but this is the budget really at a glance, so it's, it's everything for all the funds, separated by operations at the top, and then the non-operating funds, and I'm not going to go through every item here, but on, from left to right, it lists the funds, so the educational fund's the top fund there, we have the beginning fund balance, and that's projected, our audit isn't complete yet, the anticipated revenues, the expenditures, what the variance is, we're showing a positive variance here of $708,000, and then the ending balance is listed there all the way over to the right. So, you will see some shortfall, some negative numbers there in O and M and transportation, we do have fund balance to cover that shortfall, that transportation shortfall will probably grow just because of, we know our transportation aid's going to be less, so more than likely, we, you will see a transfer from working cash to the transportation fund in the final budget to accommodate that shortfall. We're expecting a very small ending fund balance, but that may disappear when we get our final state aid reimbursement numbers from the state, so we'll include that, we've done that in the past couple of years as well, you know, what's really, we've increased the levy in transportation, but the state aid is really been hurting us there, or the lack thereof. IMR, Social Security, we're doing okay in that fund, and then, you know, the working cash, right now, we don't have any funds, expenses budgeted there. So, that's kind of, and then, you know, down below there, really, the activity is the debt service and what that shows. So, that's, that's in all funds, the total amount there of that 33, 449114, and revenues, total expenditures of 33, 173, 578, for an overall positive variance of 273,536, so that's our projected number in the tentative budget as of, as of tonight. And then we kind of break it down by the pie chart, just to kind of show you what that looks like, and that's kind of really just taking the previous page into this pie chart, showing that, you know, 85% of the revenues really are represented by the ed fund, followed by the O and M and transportation and so on. Then we move into the expenditures with the next slide for operating funds, and no surprise there, we're the biggest fund in expenditures, accounting for expenditures is the ed fund, same order there, ed, O and M, transportation and so on with the funds and what they represent for the total pie. I did want to break out the ed fund a little bit more, just because that's our largest fund, and, you know, it's an important fund, and, you know, that's where all our teaching staff is accounted for, and, you know, many classroom supplies, technology, that type of thing is all accounted for in that, this fund. So, the top line, and I know you have this in your Board packet, but I just thought I'd kind of run through this one slide, the, this is just the revenue showing on this page, the tentative budget's at the top in bolded, then the next bracket below the gray line there is the 2020-21 budget, and then the budget activity, and those comparisons, the variances with that fourth line down or so, variance compared to FY21 activity, so we're showing there, the local revenues are changing by just over 1%, so there wasn't, you know, that, that kind of puts it in context in terms of the taxes and what that, that looks like. State aid, you know, pretty much flat there, and then the federal change of 60%, so overall, just under like a 3.9% increase in revenues in the ed fund. And then, just kind of the pie chart that shows the, you can see the, you know, 85% of the revenues in the ed fund are local sources, primarily consisting of property taxes in that, in that local source revenue. Then we move into the expenditures in the ed fund, and all the object categories that we talked about earlier, but left to right, we have the expenditure comparisons for the 2021-22 budget, salaries, benefits, all the way down the line to the right, we're showing an 8.1% increase overall compared to last year's activity. Salaries, with the 3.4, 1% increase, if you look at that second column there, fourth line down, 3.4%. If we, if we didn't have these ESSER funds, salaries would have been about a 1.6% increase, so that, with the extra folks who are being funded with grant funds, that boosted up to 3.4%, but we, we think it's necessary to make that happen. And then the benefits, purchase services are at 24%, supplies are at 99% increase, but if you look at the budget under their 2020-21 budget for both purchase services and supplies, purchase services is almost, just what, $30,000 more than the previous year of the 1.7 million, so it's, it's, when you compare it to the budget, it's a, it's a pretty minimal increase. And then the bigger, the one, the way, almost to, all the way to the right are the tuition costs of that 2.9 million, there's your 12.9% increase, and that, again, is based on enrollment projections. And then just the pie chart that kind of shows it broken out, salaring benefits, probably to no one's surprise, encompasses the majority of expenses within the ed fund, followed by purchase services, tuition, and supplies are kind of broken out in that manner. And then operations and maintenance, very similar layout, I just did these two funds because these are probably the biggest funds that we have, are the biggest funds that we operate. Operations and maintenance, same, same format, a 9.2% increase, if you look all the way over to the right under total, the third line down, and really, that's driven by that federal ESSER money, some ESSER money is budgeted there, and that's where the ionization project will be paid from out of this fund, so that 152,000 almost is ESSER money that's budgeted there. And then the pie chart that just shows 94% of the revenues are local, and then 6% are federal, we don't receive any state aid in the operations and maintenance fund. And then the expenditures, the same kind of layout there, overall, if you look all the way over to the right, we're showing a 20.2% bump. You know, operations and maintenance, a lot of things didn't happen last year, we didn't have a lot of activities, we didn't have really much extra hours to, to work, just because the facility just didn't have as much activity going on with functions, so those extra hours for events and things like that just didn't materialize, so that's really what, why that looks like such a big jump. But actually, the budget, if you look at budget to budget, it's about a $40,000 difference, so activity is way down, we knew that would, well, we had a pretty good idea, and that's how it materialized, but the budget to budget is pretty comparable. And then the pie chart that kind of breaks out everything in terms of salaries, aren't quite as, don't fill up much, as much of the pie chart as it does with the ed fund, but there's more operational costs associated with this fund. And then this, this is kind of a, not the prettiest chart, I guess, but it's, it's the 2021 budget compared to the 21 activity for all the operating funds, so there's your 11.3% increase all the way over to the right, when you add up all the numbers, that's what that increase looks like, 6.1% for salary, benefits 4.5, and again, that would include the ed fund, O and M, transportation, and IMRF. And then page 25, slide 25, the fund balance history, so 2020 is the latest known audited number of 9.9 months, we did, are projecting it to go up a couple of months there to 12, that's why it's in red, it's, it's not audited yet, but that, we did have a favorable year because, as we said, the expenses kind of came in as we expected, but, or revenues did rather, but expenses were down quite a bit. So, finally, applause, please, the next steps, approving the tentative budget and placing on public display, which we'll ask the Board to do tonight, continue to refine the FY22 budget, as we said, the transportation, fund balance transfer, and the ESSER activity funds, grants, we'll continue to refine and have those updated in the final budget, we'll continue to monitor the local, state, and federal decisions, and then September 15th, we'll present the budget, we'll have a hearing that evening, and we'll ask the Board to approve the budget that evening. So, with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
What's a Perkins grant, and what does it mean?
That's a federal grant, and it funds our CTE program, Career and Technical Education program, so they buy supplies for the auto shop, family and consumer science, things like that. We don't pay any salaries out of that, it's mainly just non-labor expenses that we fund there. It's about $40,000 roughly, it's not a huge amount of money, but that, that's what Perkins is for, yes.
You know, I may have revealed myself here a little bit, but as far as the ESSER grants, is this, is this something that's just one year, or is this, how many years do we get this?
ESSER, the big one, the ESSER III is for three years, and then we have two years for the ESSER II.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've got a little bit of time to spend there, yeah. All right.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Very well said, once again, he will continue to work on the budget. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2021-22 tentative budget as presented and place it on public display in the district office, it is further recommended that the Board schedule a public hearing at 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, prior to adoption of the final budget.
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, thank you, and may I have a roll call? And may I have a roll call?
We've been?
Yes.
Hey? Yes. Rizansky?
Yes.
Regal? Yeah? Figaroa?
Yes.
Paul Pong?
Yes. And motion passed. Next we go to the discussion items. Now, this is, this is where we talk about public comments. I wanted to just revisit and maybe vote today on how we want to proceed. So did you guys get a chance to look at the, the school board policy? Can we open discussion on that? What's your thoughts and?
I like where we were going at our previous meeting. So we're having our second round of discussion. I, I liked Sylvia's suggestion. I think it struck a fair compromise and kept us in a limited amount of time. But on the other point, we're limited per topic. My concern is when we get to multiple topics. I'd like to see us somehow, if it's allowable, set a hard timeline. I, again, learning, feeling things out. I understand when you get those hot button items, it could happen, but also we've had meetings go well past ten and we have work the next day. So I know people need to be heard, but we got to find the compromise and people need to know what to expect.
Yeah. Thoughts, comments? I, I will say this is, it, it would take us to go through this policy and change it, right? And then follow through with, you know, making sure that...
I'm sorry, could you just pick up a little bit?
Yeah. You know, if we were to amend or change this policy, it would require us to, you know, rewrite this, amend this, and then, you know, of course, come back and deliver on that. So the one thing that I, I looked at too is, you know, so we've got three minutes per, per person, right? And we've been pretty good at giving, giving room and courtesy to that. I wanted to hear from you guys though, like what are your thoughts on it? My, my thought on it is this, you know, the first thing that I, I thought about is, you know, we, it's a good thing that we analyze it and revisit it from time to time to see if it's, you know, serving the public, right? To make sure that our, our stakeholders, the public gets a chance to speak and get a fair chance, everybody gets a fair chance. And then we look at, okay, if we, if we have a group of people, how do we handle it? How do we provide equity in fairness and speaking? But then also be able to function as a board, you know, without taking away from what we have to do as far as board business. There is some leeway, there is some leeway on this where, let's say we have five people. It, it allows the board president to at least give some of that. I'd want to get feedback on that too and I really want to know what you guys think on that and see what we want to do. Do we kick this further down? Do we, you know, keep it where it's at? Do we propose something new?
I think we should, I mean, my opinion, I think we should keep it where it's at. We've always been flexible and continue to be flexible. I mean, we can look at, we're just going to turn four minutes. It's true. Be flexible. You know, to, to increase, I mean, I think it's been working fine. We've always been flexible. We never really shut anyone down. So I, I would say we just continue with our present policy.
I think I would echo Paul. I think as long as we continue to give people flexibility, if, if we as a board find that we're not giving that flexibility of letting someone finish their thought, then I think we would need to revisit the policy. Somebody would need to step up and say, you know, I think that we have been flexible with letting people finish their thought. So I don't know if we need to rewrite the whole thing, but that's just my opinion.
I'd say keep it the way that it is and be flexible with everyone. I mean, if you're going to, you know, be flexible with one, you can't say to the next person, no, you know? So you have to be careful with that.
I believe he's right. I'm sorry, man. Because if we pass the three minutes, a lot of people start going back to the same point and bringing some ideas and we lose the point. So three minutes, I believe, is a fair time. No more than three minutes is, like you said, guys, is flexibility. I love it. But we need to bring, or whoever is the speaker, they got to bring whatever they're going to do. Because after three minutes, they start all over and why this happened, why this is not happening? And we, if we want to allow, pardon, we're going to allow for more than three minutes, what is going to happen next? We open up for four minutes, five minutes, and later on, we're going to have a ten minutes.
Right. They need to prepare for three minutes.
Right. Three minutes, I believe is enough time.
Right. You know, not go on for fifteen and they're not in a filibuster, you know, keep going, going, going.
Right.
Let people finish their thought.
Right. The perception, what I just wanted to say was that the perception of adding three, four minute limit and being flexible is still better than doing a five minute, five minute limit and then having a hard stop. I kind of agree with you.
We normally don't have the house packed, so I don't think we usually have a problem.
Yeah.
But this is in the, for the occasion of, if we have, you know, forty people in the room, then we would have to do a hard stop if, you know, it could go on for hours or something, you know? Am I right? I mean...
No.
Is that, is that what we're sort of talking about? Is if we have a hundred people in the room and they all want to speak, we have to have this time limit kind of thing going?
What was the other part of this? Do we need to address the hundred person night? Can we address the hundred person night in some way, shape or form? It wasn't just, do we want to give more time? We have to look at worst case scenario. We still have to get the business of the evening done. So it goes both ways and we, the board, to the best of my knowledge, has been flexible. And I'm comfortable with that. But we also have to look at the other side of it. That's why we're looking at the policy as a whole, not just one part of it. Is there something we need to address in the big picture night? How can we do this? We say we limit a topic to thirty minutes. Well, unfortunately, you get a two or three hot topic night, that's ninety minutes. I, I just, I don't know. That's why we're asking these questions. If we're going to talk about it, we have to look at the big picture, not just part of it. I'm comfortable leaving it alone and reexamining as time goes along. I think we've done our due diligence. I think good points have been made. I'm just throwing out the other side of the coin as well.
Okay. Administration, you guys have any thoughts?
I think you guys are, you hit the key point. Be flexible. You guys are doing an outstanding job. I've been doing this for five years and you guys have been gracious. If someone went over two minutes, we let them talk because we know we want our parents, our students, our staff to go home and feel heard and it's okay. In regards to a hundred people, I think Kit will have flexibility. Hey, look, we're going to listen for comments for thirty to forty minutes. First fifteen minutes, I'm going to throw out some example, is on the topic of budget. The next fifteen minutes will be on the topic of ESSER or reopening plan. Next fifteen minutes, so, so the topics are heard. Think what's happening is you can't say this topic will be thirty minutes, this topic will be thirty minutes, then we'll be here forever. Then you put a hard limit, public comments is this long and we're going to try to hit all the points with those different topics. I think once again, to the rate, I think you guys are on the right track. Flexibility is the key.
Does our budget, does our document address that? I can't remember.
I think it does.
All right.
Only other point I would add is, it seems like we kind of have consensus here of what we want to do. But I would suggest if you want to look at policy, you can do it during a regularly scheduled policy review. And in that way, we have our press policies, but there are times where we may want to review an existing policy anyway. So maybe see how it goes in the next few months and then if we have a policy meeting, we can decide whether we want to actually review that policy too.
Okay. So...
Our next, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Our next policy meeting is?
Our next policy is about three months. So we'll put that on the docket for you guys to review and change if we need to. But per board meeting, flexibility, I think Kit has done a good job facilitating that and once again, letting folks be heard.
Okay. So then, do, do we even make a motion to keep everything the same? No, right? We just leave it at that?
This would be a discussion only. We don't have a vote on this one. The next four items is discussion only.
Then let's take a look at the onboarding process.
Sure. Thanks, Kit. Just real quick, Kit led this charge as well. He gave me some homework. I'm going to pass out some documents, Kit, if you can take that and pass it down, one, two, three, four. Maybe give some over there. And we got four here and I'll keep one for myself. It has really been an onboarding. We have on-boarded numerous board members. This is my third, no, fourth board that we have transitioned. We just never wrote it down. And President Ting Paul Pong has encouraged me to write it down. He had some ideas, I had some ideas, and so we have it here as a three pager, okay? It's a living document, okay? It's a living document because each board member, each board team has different challenges depending on the year. And this year has been the pandemic year. So we would like to keep this as a living document. But in general, there's six themes here, okay? I'm sorry, five themes. Here, let me put on my glasses. Number one is governance, number two is policy, number three, district, four, schools and other. It's a checklist as Kit wanted to, to put out there. So my job is, and your job is, as new board members, is to make sure we're doing this. And if you look at this, we have done, I would say fifty percent of it. A lot of it is through your training, your two-day mandated training. Last week, we had a training with the Illinois Association of School Board and part of it is your one-on-one meeting with me or your meeting with me and with your colleagues as well. It's a living document. The first page talks about governance, policy and district and school. Let's just give example, let's look at number two, policy, board policy on the webpage, policy committee meetings, press, those are key items for that particular topic. Next one is this district, strategic plan, administrators, webpage and its content. Those are critical. Then the majority of this is the acronyms on page two and three, which we're going to have a test on later on tonight. And I think Mr. Rizansky is going to ace this because he's the one who told me, hey, I need to know more about acronyms. Well, here's sixty-eight of them. Just a joke, John.
No, I'm good. Duly noted.
Okay. Important events is there, beginning of your, your term, copy the oath when you guys were sworn in and so forth. That was a huge part from Kit's part. He wanted to make sure we, we thoroughly go through that and document it. So part of this is documentation, part of it is a checklist, so it's thorough. It's a living document and we're going to continue to improve in our, our manner. I encourage you guys to talk, not in groups of three, obviously, to make sure we don't violate OMA, but this is a good start here. I would be willing to get some comments. Please take a look at it. But I think the most important thing is building relationship, looking at our website, attending meetings, looking at your association's webpage, which is the Illinois Association of School Board. It's filled there. It's filled with materials. Any questions on this?
First of all, I still laugh at the acronyms.
I'm going to fail the test. I admit it right now.
I have it in my phone.
Phone, good.
Personally, I think this is, I think this is great, yeah. I think good job, you guys.
And a lot of it is, we, we're doing it naturally. I think, you know, Kit had a point, hey, look, put it on paper. Make it a checklist.
Well, that allows for consistency and it helps us jar our memories. It only happens every two years.
Correct.
I mean, it makes sense. I didn't know I got a photo ID.
I think this was feedback from other board members too, so just, thank you, you guys, appreciate it. Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
Putting it together. But, yes, any questions on this, comments? Kudos?
There's no salary sections, by the way. Salaries, benefits, no, no, no. There's no salary for board members in...
Is that here?
No. Shall we have a test on our forehead?
Okay. So I think we're, we've, we've satisfied that. And, yeah, let's go to the Fenton website.
Sure. Thanks, Kit. Real quick, the board basically gave a directive, hey, look, we want our own board page for messages from the board as needed. So thank you, Rick, for carving this out. Next slide, Jim? So the board can see it. Here's your board page, okay?
So as you can see, when you hit board, Board of Education, there's some menus here to hit your board page. We click that, this will pop up. On occasion, the Fenton Board of Education might decide to post a message outside of its traditional meeting venue. Those messages will be posted on the pages for at least ninety days, that's three months. Okay, like for example, John, hey, look, there's this rumor out there that's unnecessary. We post it there, outside of our regular meeting, outside of my messages. So we're, we're overseeing, we're communicating and the board is able to communicate to the public. Any question? Yes?
How will we decide, will we decide as a group what goes on that message board? Who's going to decide what goes on that message board?
I think that should be your, Kit and the president work through the superintendent, that's me, and we'll get it on the board. For example, I wouldn't put something every week, right? I think it's like what John, what the, let's use this, this tool the way you guys designed it. And John said it best, if there is a misinformation, community clarification that's needed, that's what we need to put out there. For example, you know what I'm talking about, let's say, hey, look, all of a sudden, the e-game is being run out of Fenton. That's not true. We're still going to have e-games here and so forth. That's what the message you want to do or something in regards to the budget. I think it should be to those top items.
So it may not be monthly even, it might just be...
I, I really don't think so, but it's really up to the topic. Kit?
To me, it's, it's a way for us to, I think, maybe set the record straight, make sure we get facts out, something that's relevant. I think that's where our board members, us, we wanted to get to was just a way to get the information out, right? That's factual and scientific. You know, for example, when, when we had the, the music program changes, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we get that message out. So I think, you know, it'd be, it'd be board decided, absolutely, one hundred percent. We might discuss on, you know, just a, a, a kind of a formal or informal process of how to do it and we can, this will evolve as we have it.
Right. I see this, go ahead, go ahead, no.
No, I just wanted to be clear. So, so if there's something, if I, you know, there's a rumor or I heard something and I would share it with you as the board president and it would go, then you or James would put it on the, on the message board?
Right, yeah. Administrators will. Here's what I do recommend. I think what you're going to put up there has to be discussed at a meeting. I don't think you like just calls up Kit, hey, look, I heard this rumor over here at McDonald's, right? It's, it's, it really has to be a true item, you probably were heard. And most of it is going to come from the mic over there, right? During public comments, right? I think that's, we reserve it for that. I like that terminology, get the, get the facts straight and this is how we're going to do it.
Something does happen in the boardroom here that needs to be clarified to the public.
Right.
Then it will be clarified secondarily on the website.
Correct.
Yeah. It would probably be prudent for us to vet it as well, you know, through, through the proper channels or legal, but, but we need to be timely with it, right? So we have to have a process in place, a chain of command that we can understand and go through. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, thank you. And then the, the translated minutes, I think that's on James.
Yep. That's also done here. Thank you, Mrs. Timmons over there for doing that hard work. I didn't know she spoke Spanish and Polish. Just joking, we had translators do that. So also on the website, if people want to know our minutes, now they're in English, Polish and Spanish. Here's an example, I believe, this is Spanish. There's a scroll down. It starts off with English and Spanish then Polish. Okay, so that's there on our website. So we got that done as well.
That's great.
Thank you, administration. Thank you, James, for following through with that. I just want to make a, a quick note is, a lot of the reasons why we're pursuing these things is to make sure... I just wanna make a quick note. A lot of the reasons why we're pursuing these things is to make sure, to make sure that, you know, we're serving the public, we're listening to, making sure the public good is met, right? And then also that we are able to conduct board business efficiently and functionally, right? So, thank you for that. So we go next to, if nothing else, we'll go to the committee reports, starting with the Bensonville Community Foundation.
So we had a meeting scheduled for last Thursday, but we did not have a quorum. So we were unable to have that meeting. We will have a other meeting in two months.
The DI Committee, do you wanna? We did get approached by FAN and had an open discussion on just some of the items that they had before. And I think overall, just to be able to listen and, you know, get a chance to connect with the board that way was probably meaningful for them, would you say?
Yes.
And that's it. I think that was the biggest thing, was to make sure that we reach out to them. I think that's all we have for now. Finance Facilities Committee?
Sure, Bruce and I will tag-team this. So we had three guest speakers, as you guys know. First, STR, who's STR? They are our architect. We also had Crystal Financial with Dr. Grossi, who's Crystal Financial, he's our financial advisor. And lastly, we had EOS Sullivan, a referendum consulting firm. What was our focus? Our focus was our facility audit and what we're gonna do it. So we have done a facility audit. There's things that needs to be fixed in the building that's related to student learning and student growth and student success. It was pointed out a couple items, the layout, the space, the age, and so forth. We are, we, we, how can I put that? In a nutshell, it's about the referendum. I pointed out the timeline for that referendum, which was June, next, this upcoming June, June twenty-twenty-two. We could put it on the ballot there. We could put it on the ballot in the following, that following November and that following March. It was a great job in regards to STR, in regards to what's the results of the audit. A thorough audit was done, not just inside the building, but the infrastructure of the building, as well as the campus and underneath the ground as well. As STR mentioned, we do have a water issue. I like what he said, water go where it can go. And it has caused a lot of damage, not just in the field, but also our building. Crystal Financial with Dr. Grossi basically said, hey, look, if you are gonna take on this referendum, this building project, this remodeling, how are you gonna pay for it? And it was through bonds, and he gave you some means of how to pay for these projects. And lastly, EOS, in regards to a referendum consultation, we need the support of our community. We need community input, and there's a strategy behind that. And I think that's in a nutshell, but Bruce was listening with a third ear as well. Bruce, what did I miss?
I think you did a great job there. The only thing, I guess, with Ellen from STR, I thought, when he reviewed the pictures of the current state of conditions and what they could potentially be, I thought that was, you know, worthwhile to look at. And he also reviewed the cost scenarios and the different options that the district and the board could consider moving forward, if they choose to move forward with these projects or any part of it. And then, again, Rob Grossi, again, reviewed potential financing options available to the district and what it would mean to a taxpayer, the potential cost of if they were to, for various scenarios and increases. And, you know, you summed it up well with Ed Sullivan, really reviewed what he could do for a successful potential referendum.
And I will pause there. Thank you, Bruce, in regards to the next steps. Like what we mentioned, that was just one touch of the football. We got four more periods to play. We know that EOS Sullivan is coming next month, the eighteenth, to talk about his, what his role and his company's role will be in the referendum. But I was thinking just now, would love to get, know your feedback here, is who else would you like us to bring back? Would you like to spend more back, some more time with Crystal Financial, or would that be later? Would you like to bring him one-on-by-one or two per meeting? We wanna maximize our board meetings, because there's only twelve, right, once per month. And we wanna make sure, my goal in particular is to make sure you are informed and over-informed, and you know exactly where we're going, and no one is surprised. I mean, in reality, we asked four questions. I think you've gotta continue to ask questions.
I think eventually, Rob Grossi, I mean, he's very good at what he does. And he gives very organic, you know, some of his advice, advice and all these. He's served Fenton well in the past. So I wouldn't say maybe not next time, but eventually down the road.
Sure. That makes sense. Let's get the nuts and bolts of what's wrong, what we need to do. Then let's see how we could pay for it, okay? That's another way. We could also, with bringing those two groups back, expand our time together. Instead of starting at six, we could say five forty-five.
Sullivan Consulting, too, at the very end, because I would like to get more revealed. How is he gonna bring in the community? That was kind of the question I was trying to ask him. I understand how he's bringing in friends and families, but how is he reaching the community? I would really like to hear.
Our seniors, yep.
How is he gonna get outsiders outside of Fenton? What is his, what is his reach? How's he doing that? So I would love to ask him more questions on his process.
Okay, yeah. I wanna just, I really wanna put this in my own head in perspective here, right? What are we really doing here? What does this project mean to us and the community and the school and these kids, the administration? What does it really mean, right? So we look at this facility since, what, nineteen fifty? You said nineteen fifty? So education's changed a lot, right? Our demographics have likely changed a lot. And the education process has changed a lot. So, you know, personally, I do see the case for it. I think it's a good idea to explore it. The weight of this, the weight of this decision for us is what I really want to just have us think about, is the fact that, you know, there is dollars, tax dollars being spent. We're gonna get into a bond situation. And I wanna make sure that we get a maximum return on it, right? Not just tangible, looking at the space, not just tangible, but the intangible items that, you know, probably transcend our education process here. But, you know, tonight, we look at, you know, the successes we've had and a lot of the excellence that we've demonstrated under our leadership here, James, administration. But, you know, we may or may not be here in twenty or thirty years. So this is, this is the weight of the decision we're making. So I hope that we maintain thoughtfulness and prudence when we do this. My personal preference would be that we look at it from a sustainability lens. I think if people, you know, paid attention to the meetings, and what I talk about, what I advocate for is gonna be sustainability, looking ahead at how we, you know, approach our architecture in terms of material handling, you know, water management, energy consumption, all those things. Because when we buy into something like this with this type of tag, right, we gotta look at also maintaining it, you know? How is that going to benefit us in reducing our cost of maintenance, operations, all those things? So those have been weighing on my mind on this, and so that's probably what I'll be looking at, is that approach.
I don't think we have a choice after touring the building. Something has to be done. It's just weighing, doing it right, getting the most bang for our buck, and yet limiting the impact to the taxpayer, but still accomplishing the goal. There's no doubt we have to update the building. There's no doubt we need to fix things, correct things, change things for the times. It's just, where's that gonna fall? I like that we have five choices. I already have an idea in my head. I've already said, trust your gut. I already have an idea in my head. Not that I've made up my mind, but at least I got a starting point. And now we need to get more information to get to a decision that we, as a board, or most of us on the board, can agree to, and then move forward that way as a whole, and try and get this task accomplished. I do like the idea of bringing in a third-party expert, because it is, it is, it's gonna be an interesting couple of years. It's gonna be a lot of work, but it's gonna be for the positive. And in the end, it's just how do we get to that goal? So I think we beat this pretty good. We got a lot more to do. It's just the beginning. I don't even think we started the first quarter. I think we're in warm-ups, quite honestly.
Not yet. We're still in the locker room. Leo?
Yeah. Holly, I believe Julie was here, and most of the people from Bensonville. Do you remember how Ta'oga, Chikewa were? And they did it. They combined two schools in one, and look at the school, and I believe if we are afraid, we're not gonna jump high. Please, be together, and we got to do it. Otherwise, we are wasting our time here.
I'd just like to really point out, from the administration point of view, we have our whys. I think if we don't know, we can't identify the whys. I think I've pointed out six or seven whys, why we're doing that. If you could think of any other whys as well, I think we should write that included. Everything is here, is documented, which is important. I think the stars are aligned to make this happen. The team that I'm meeting with, which is STR, the administration, Crystal Financial, and EOS, we're calling this the Legacy Team, because that's what you guys are doing here. It's not just this generation, but at least three or four generations of Fenton students that you are affecting. And I think we could definitely do this. This team could do it. We like what we, I like what we saw. I saw, and I like what I was hearing in regards to the question. So we will bring STR back and EOS Sullivan. I think we're sticking with six, not forty-five. I didn't get a lot of head nods to bring them a little early. It seemed like one, an hour is enough. So we'll leave it at that.
So if nothing else, we'll get to the IASB delegate.
Nothing new there. The only thing is, tentatively, the fall dinner meeting is still October first.
Thank you, Paul. Lend?
No meeting there.
And Netza?
No meeting until next month.
Thank you. I think we go to closed session now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Could I bring just one last thing? The discussion we had before regarding the blended word, there was one aspect of that, I thought it over that we're kind of missing on this, is we are all here about challenges. Challenging them to their full potential. And if there's a method by which to challenge these students, and I see that correctly, or wrong, Michelle, that, you know, to challenge them, you know, we need to support them. And not only that, but I would, you know, the teachers we have here are professional, they're administrative professionals. And that if they are confident, a student, that they have the mental aptitude, the responsibility and the maturity to go to another lab and do some independent learning or with other groups and so forth, I think that along with the evidence-based learning is something we should support. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, I think in that conversation, we're a little lost as to the reasoning behind it. And if there's initiatives that challenge students, you know, just like Michelle said, that if you teach towards the traditional method, like teaching towards the rental, and some are not getting challenged, or we're not doing the best for the students. We're not offering the best for the students. So I see that as a method for their challenge of students. That's something we should focus on. And also, you know, the fact that they have mechanisms in place to know where all the students are at that time. There's a process, and you're having to do it otherwise. So I'm not wondering where the students.
Thank you, Paul. And I'll finish with, I think it's a Ronald Reagan saying, trust but verify. So we do trust you, but sometimes we gotta verify. Thank you, guys. So next board meeting, Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM, with the finance facilities meeting scheduled at six PM prior to the regular board meeting. And now I will make, may I have a motion and second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Five Illinois CS, one twenty-two C one. And collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Five Illinois CS, one twenty-two C two. May I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Will you, man?
Yes.
Ray Zenski?
Yes.
Raygo?
Yes.
Ray Gorow?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tengpo Pong?
Yes. Motion passed, and we will be in closed session.